Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 5th, 2021 State Board of Education Meeting. The Commissioner is joining us remotely today. An abundance of caution, allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item 1.3. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted as you enter the room from the main entrance doors. The Opens Meeting Act is also posted on the State Board of Education's website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. Agenda item 1.4. COVID-19 Meeting Protocol. Ryan, is there anything you wanted to add? Okay, thank you. Agenda item 2. Public Comment. We will now have the public comment period. This period of public comment is available for anyone who wishes to address the State Board on subjects within its authority. Please note that public comments should be on topics related to the State Board's constitutional and statutory authority. Thank you to the members of the public who are here today. If you have not turned in your card to speak, please do so now. Agenda item 2. We will now move to our public comment period. Those wishing to speak signed in at the table outside of the meeting room. The Board voted yesterday to limit public comment to end by 4:00 p.m., where each person may address the Board for up to two minutes. The Board may take a 45-minute lunch break announced at a time prior to recessing. As provided under Section 814-12 (III), the Board waives and does not require that persons that address the Board in public comment provide their physical address. The Board does, however, request that you please state what town you are from. I will announce the names of the next 16 speakers so that they are prepared to come forward and sit in the front row. Dan Erman. Dawn Erman. Stephanie Johnson. Jenna Dur. Katie McClemmons. Janice Van Winkle. Kathy Adams. Justin Teal. Sherri Jones. William and Rita Trish. Dee Elder. Kelly Brady. Teresa Carey. Deb Miller. Brenda McGill. And Amber Parker. Dan Erman. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you. Good morning. I want to start by referring back to the State School Board meeting which took place on August 6. I appreciate that some of the State School Board members shared so candidly and openly with us. I've reviewed the statements once again to attempt to be able to recognize where each of you are coming from. And after reviewing the final statements to the crowd, I believe that Robin Stevens fell prey to emotions over logic. He made the bold statement, "I don't care what I hear from those out there, it is a world-class education." The context behind this quote is that there were individuals who shared that they believed that the State School Board was failing to provide quality education for students of Nebraska. They stated that the system was not working. Mr. Stevens argued to trust the system because it works. I truly believe that he does trust the system, so much so that he did not do adequate research to share accurate information. Stating that Nebraska has a world-class education has some truth behind it, but the truth must be quantified. The United States' public education system is currently ranked number two in the world, according to the World Population Review. That is impressive until we look at the program for international student assessment test scores. Our students are not testing well. We were ranked 11th in science and 30th in math out of 79 countries, and we're dropping every year. Recent studies have demonstrated that most high school graduates are not ready for college-level work. In fact, the studies show that 60% are not prepared for college after high school. Comparing Nebraska State public schools to the rest of the United States shows that we rank 50th. So the statement that Nebraska provides a world-class education has some truth in it, but the entire truth shows that our public school system needs to be vastly improved. Each of you were elected to serve the people of Nebraska by guiding the schools. As seen at the September 2nd School Board's meeting, this Board is not functioning well. You demonstrated that you do not trust each other or Commissioner Bloomstead. This dysfunction is not what our children need. Our children need individuals who are bonded together in truth with integrity. Are each of you these individuals? And if not, are you willing to do what's best for the students?
Time. Thank you, Dan. Dawn Erman. Welcome, Dawn. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Dawn Erman, and I'm from Gothenburg. As my husband shared, you are failing at teaching our kids the standards that you are supposed to be teaching them. Your complacency or willingness to ignore the blatant misuse and position and policy by Deborah Neary shows a lack of severe -- or a severe lack of transparency, integrity, and any sense of morals. I have seen exception to this with Jaclyn Morrison, but the benefit of the doubt has been obliterated, and we, as parents, have proven over and over that this Board cannot be trusted. The examples you are setting for our children are all based in politics, indoctrination, money, and power. Children need an education on the basics so that they can form beliefs themselves and go out and improve this world, not sabotage it. I pray my kids are the opposite of what I see before me. If you are the example of success, I hope they fail. I pray they become men and women of character, standing firm in the truth of God's Word, loving Jesus and loving others in spite of society telling them to do the opposite. You need to own up to your failures as a Board and fix the problems, not just hope parents stop coming, watching, and being involved, because that won't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Stephanie Johnson. Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning. Stephanie Johnson, Lincoln, Nebraska. I was a speech pathologist for Lincoln Public Schools for 17 years, and I love children. There are 325,000 public schoolchildren in Nebraska. In years 2017 through 19, only half of them were proficient in math and English, and we have no data for years 20 to 21. Parents are currently outraged that you have wasted this much time focusing on a health and sex curriculum when no one but you and a small minority wants it, and it's completely unnecessary. When I testified in August, there were carloads of LGBTQ high school students from Omaha brought in to testify for the sex standards. It was organized. They all had escorts who held their place in line. Their escorts held a meeting for them and walked them in to sign up. I felt it was a huge misrepresentation of the 325,000 children in the Nebraska State Schools. You halted the standards after 90% of the feedback you received was against it, but you also halted them because you were caught lying. You had stated that no outside activist groups helped you in their creation. However, emails and texts obtained from the Freedom of Information Act proved that you did lie, and you did seek help from the radical left-wing groups such as CICUS and Planned Parenthood. It was confirmed that you, Deb Neary, scheduled a meeting between NDE members and CICUS behind the scenes, seeking to influence the creation of the standards. Deb, you also invited the standard writers and fellow Board members to an invitation-only workshop with a national sex education expert. When the Nebraska educators that you supposedly had working on the standards saw the standards when they came out, they were devastated by what they saw because they did not write them. It was CICUS that actually wrote them, not the Nebraska educators. The ethics demonstrated by this Board is questionable at best. Deb Neary, in particular, the deceit confirmed through your emails and texts should be enough to have you removed from this Board effective immediately. You need to scrap the standards and get back to raising our students' proficiency in the state of Nebraska in reading and math above the 50th percentile. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Jenna Dur. Good morning, Jenna.
Good morning. My name is Jenna Dur, and I'm from Kearney. I remain a concerned mom. A couple of months ago, emails and text messages were discovered which clearly showed what many of us had suspected all along. Something was not right with the development of the health sex education standards. We just didn't know how wrong things really were. And now that we do, where is a response from this Board? President Nichols, we are waiting. Nebraska has been in the news lately, and some of you all took the time to respond to questions from reporters. However, we, the parents, and we, the citizens and taxpayers of Nebraska, have yet to hear any response. Where is the leadership? How are we to trust anything going forward from this State Board of Education? Adding another bureaucratic ad hoc committee reveals how disconnected you are from the people who elected you to serve. There has been no apology for the lies and misrepresentations from the State Board of Education members, the Commissioner, or the NDE staff. It was shocking to read behind closed doors how many in the department view parents and other concerned citizens. We were mocked, we were made fun of, and we're accused of being part of conspiracies. However, to the public, the complete opposite was presented. We were reassured you all wanted to hear feedback, to hear our point of view. You said parents were important. But even yesterday, several of the Board members doubled down on your false narratives and continue to present misinformation as reality. We are not fooled. Actions speak louder than words. Your plans to explore restriction of public comment and participation for the convenience of a schedule reveal your true intentions. After knowing what really happened, how can we trust you? We expect some type of response. How can you all assure us that such manipulation and lies won't happen again? What changes will be made going forward? Have there been staff changes within the NDE? Who is setting the culture and tone for the NDE? Why would employees believe such behaviors would even be tolerated? There has been a significant breach in trust, and we no longer trust any of you. We are waiting and watching. What will you do next? Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Katie McClemmons. Welcome, Katie.
Good morning, Board. Katie McClemmons from Kearney. I represent the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition. Over the past months, much good has come from a renewed interest in how our educational system works in Nebraska. Concerning the State Board of Education specifically, we have discovered that manipulation of the process of standards will be tolerated from within. Each of you have been provided with proof that for at least some Board members, NDE employees, and partner activists, the goal became to teach our children what to think, not how to think. A disdain for concerned and active parents permeated communications amongst these parties, and based on the business meeting yesterday, this disdain for parents continues. Stakeholders deserve actions, not just words. There have been no apologies, no ramifications communicated for the future, no resignations or changes in positions, no investigations. This inaction further degrades the public's trust in their representatives on this Board. The times we live in require courage of conviction and the ability to do what is right, even when doing so is difficult and costly. And so, President Nichols, we ask you to lead your Board in appropriate actions that validate the known problems and set a precedent for the future. Next, I'd like to address the incredible amount of anti-American Marxist resources usually availed as equity resources available to teachers on the NDE website. These resources must be replaced with resources that value our nation, teach excellent civics, and teach factual history, which empowers students to emulate the excellence in our history and avoid the repetition of the wrong. Our state Americanism statute number 79724 requires this, and the future of our country demands it. Finally, the NSBA and the Justice Department recently worked to silence parents at school board meetings, threatening them with federal action and inflammatory titles such as domestic terrorist. This requires a statement from this Board denouncing the tone and actions of these other entities and affirming parental involvement at all levels. And last, Board Member Neary, regarding yesterday's business meeting, regard, it is elitist to assume that because someone else's values and perspectives differ from yours, that they are promoting misinformation. You are not the arbitrator of truth. Fear is not what drives us. We are guided by facts, science, medicine, and a concern for all children. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Janice Van Winkle. Good morning, Janice.
Hi. My name is Janice Van Winkle from Kearney, and I am a mom of six children. We have been homeschooling our children for 13 years, and it saddens me that all that children are exposed to today in the public school system, which is precisely why ours are not in it. But we still interact with our community on a daily basis, and your decisions directly affect my family. One of the reasons I'm here today is to advocate for foster children who, for a season of their life, are wards of the state. The judge and select individuals involved in their case make all the decisions regarding their health and education. Passing these standards would only further harm, broken, traumatize children who have no one advocating for them. And unlike other families who have the option of removing their children, foster children do not. Yesterday, Deborah Neary said the new process needs to involve facts, science, and information. What about parents' opinions, grandparents' opinions? Shouldn't our voices weigh more? You should be taking public opinion into careful consideration, not blatantly disregarding it. Parents have been given the great honor of protecting and raising their children, and as long as CRT and CSE are on the table, you're going to have to accept parental input. This liberal leftist agenda has no place in the lives of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Thank you. Kathy Adams. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Adams, and I'm from Kearney, Nebraska. I listened to your meeting yesterday, and I have questions. One is, have you people even read all the written testimonies from folks that are telling you to let go of the lunacy you have tried to put into so-called health standards that you are not mandated to write? Way more people are against the inappropriate standards than are for them. Fact. The people for your agenda are far and few between. Fact. The majority are against the immoral standards and have told you why. Don't talk to us, Ms. Neary, about moral and ethic responsibility, because there is no moral, ethical fiber in what you are trying to do. I personally know two girls that went through affirmation therapy. One emancipated from her parents to get testosterone shots, had the top surgery done, and had complications. Later, she started having gynecological problems, which required a hysterectomy. She is only 19 years old. But this all started when she was in junior high. She is now having further mental problems and regrets her changes. The second young girl is my granddaughter, who had the same affirmation counselor, is on testosterone, and six days before her high school graduation had top surgery done. She was only 17 years old. She, too, admits that things are not going well and has regrets. Your moral, ethical responsibility is to do no harm, but because you are pushing forward, your lack of ethics, morals, and lack of integrity will cause more harm.
Thank you, Kathy. Justin Teal. Good morning, Justin.
Justin Teal, St. LaBoree. I'll start with some irony. In September, I presented Matt with a hypothetical of me approaching his kids in a grocery store and teaching them about anal sex, which is what you want to do to our children in the classroom. Deborah decided to say that this was a threat upon his family. Very interesting. Next, in your emails to Deborah, you stated, "I am very disappointed that Ryan and Maureen see this as if both sides need to be presented at all times. It is irresponsible, in my opinion, when one of the sides is based in science and fact and the other is based in religion." You told the Omaha World-Herald that those comments arose from your concern that some public comments were inaccurate. You have heard facts from people, people far more educated and wise than you, doctors, psychologists, even a nuclear engineer. So why do you believe these people haven't presented facts? I have a theory, and I already presented it in the April Board meeting, hoping it wasn't true, but you have proven it so. You and your colleagues are indoctrinated to believe anything that is disseminated to you from above. The things that you want to teach our children now are the bedrocks in higher education institutions, the same institutions that gave you the letters behind your name. You cannot discredit those institutions with an original thought because you're afraid it would discredit you amongst your colleagues. So you fall in line like robots, regurgitating and implementing anything to keep the status quo. Unfortunately for you, those institutions don't pay the bills. We do. The soon-to-be-voted-out Board members like to remind us that they don't get paid. But Matt, wherever you are, you get paid. According to the Nebraska Treasury, in 2020, the NDE had set 517 employees with a payroll of well over $29 million. We, the people, pay you, Matt. You are a public employee. Over 90% of the people paying your bills oppose your agenda. That has to be a tough spot to be in, and here's my recommendation. And you're right there. Fall in line, public servant, or get out.
Thank you, Justin. Sherri Jones. Good morning, Sherri.
Good morning. I'm Sherri Jones from Grand Island, and I'm running for State Board of Education, District 6. Today, I want to share my thoughts regarding the teaching of critical race theory to our children. I believe the teaching of CRT harms and threatens to reverse the significant gains we have made in the area of race relations over the past 40 or 50 years. The teachings of CRT classify children as either oppressors or oppressed as determined by their race, not their behavior, but essentially by their skin color. When we make someone think they are oppressed, we are actually teaching them that they are helpless and unable to achieve great things. When children are taught to believe they are victims, they are less likely to accept responsibility for their choices and subsequently their futures. How sad. And by telling a child he or she is an oppressor, we are causing them to accept undeserved guilt, which can affect their ability to become all they can be. So with the teaching of critical race theory, everyone loses. There are no winners. And let me end by quoting a well-spoken man from Colorado Springs, Derek Wilburn, beginning of, quote, "Racism in America would by and large be dead today if it were not for certain people and institutions keeping it on life support." And sadly, very sadly, one of those institutions is the American education system. Putting critical race theory into our classrooms is not combating racism; it is fanning the flames of what little embers are left. Let racism die the death it deserves," end of quote. You, as Nebraska State Board of Education, have the opportunity and responsibility to do all you can possibly do to keep the teachings of CRT out of our schools. Let's teach children about self-responsibility, that it is largely the choices they make which determine the level of success in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Maureen. Maureen, can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jaclyn. Point of clarification.
Can I ask you a question? So, truthfully, this is coming from a place of inquiry. I've heard a lot of reference to a quote that CRT teaches children that some children are oppressors and some children are being oppressed. Is that coming from an article, a book? Where is that coming from? Because I hear it kind of, I've heard that line and that language, and I'm just wondering, is that a text? Like, where is that? I just want to know where to find it.
I've heard it referenced in a number of places, so I can't cite the one in particular, but there's been several references that I've read about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Schwayne has a book all about it. Can you say her name louder so I can hear it? Dr. Schwayne? L-W-A-I-N, I believe. You need to read her book. Brand-new book. Read her book.
Could you come to the microphone so we can hear you?
Well, I think I can only ask a question of Ms. Jones, and so I was just wondering if her particular quote would be quoted from somewhere. About an article. Okay. Thank you.
William and Rita Trish.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Rita Fritsch. I'm from Culbertson, Nebraska. I represent the, I'm the treasurer of the Hitchcock County Republican Party in Nebraska, and I'm here to represent them. My question to you today, or my statement, is we disagree with the NSBA recent decision to request intervention from the federal agencies and law enforcement to tie concerned parents, grandparents, and, I'm, great-grandparents to claims of domestic terrorism and hate crimes. Did the NSBA consult with the Nebraska State School Board before they made this decision? And have any of you made a statement against this? We would like to see Nebraska on that list of school boards that don't agree with us. The other statement I want to make on behalf of our committee in Hitchcock County, we totally disagree with CRT and CSE. I hope you're all listening. Thank you.
Ms. Trish, I have a question, or a clarif, question. Ms. Trish? Rita?
Yes.
Could you come back to the microphone? When you reference NASB, who are you referencing?
The National School Board of Education, and I think you probably know the statement they put out, and I think you probably knew.
Are you referencing that the National School Boards is the same as the State Board of Education or the National Association?
The National Association, and I wondered if the State Board of Education, all of you, have made a statement.
We have not made a statement.
Any of you?
No. Not that I am aware of.
Maureen. I think Robin has a question.
Robin, did you have?
Same question. Same question.
Yes.
I have one. You, did you say you were from Hitchcock County? Did I hear that?
Yes.
You said, "On our committee in Hitchcock County." Could you tell me which committee you were referencing?
The Republican Party of Hitchcock County.
Okay. You just said committee, so I didn't know what the committee was. Thank you.
Ryan, could I speak to you for a second?
Just make sure this light on your screen. Got it. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dee Elder, and I'm from Omaha, Nebraska. My education was in a public school in South Omaha. K through 6 was grade school. Junior high was 7 through 9, and then high school was 10 through 12. I don't know why that ever changed. I haven't researched that. But it seemed to me back then that we were not forced to grow up too quickly. We had an idyllic childhood, and we learned things at the appropriate age. I feel that nowadays, that's changing, and it shouldn't be, because these little kids... Oh. How do I do that? Just stand? Okay. Sorry. Nowadays, I feel that society and CSE is going to do just that. It forces our precious children to lose their innocence by indoctrinating them with information that's not age-appropriate. I'm not understanding how the CSE writing benefits the elementary students. The world today is full of all kinds of sex, 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 sex. It's everywhere. It's surrounding us. I don't think it really belongs in our schools. My fourth-grade health education taught me about human anatomy. Sex ed is very limited, as was my information from my mother. She basically said, "Keep your legs crossed," and told my brother to keep it as pants. I know that's pretty crude, but that's how my mom was. Loving woman. Parents are the best teachers and can determine how and when they will educate their children on sex. CSE should not be forced on the littles, and it sickens me that it's even being considered. Borderline grooming and child abuse, in my opinion. This is not preparing them to be successful in the world; it's brainwashing them. So many Nebraskans are totally oblivious to what CSE actually is, and they don't give a rip about what's happening all over the nation. They care about their kids. Nebraskans care about the littles that God has entrusted to them. CSE is not the best that we can do for them. Let them be little. They have the rest of their lives to be adults.
Time. Thank you, Dee. Kelly Brady. Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning. Kelly Brady, Bellevue. Why am I here? Because we can't trust you. We, the taxpayers, pay your salaries. We hired you to do a job for us, to protect our children. You are not doing this. You have wasted taxpayers' money, not once, not twice. Three times, you have tried to implement sex ed standards, every time getting lost in the process of doing the right job of teaching biology. That's sexuality. Ms. Neary, you say that you were creating or helping create a standard for sex ed for children to do better in the world? I have no clue. You colluded with outside forces and took it upon yourself to make decisions for all of us. You...
Time.
...are disgusting.
Thank you, Kelly. Teresa Carey? Oh, I'm sorry. Patty?
Yes, could you come back up to the mic, please?
Kelly, could you come back to the microphone, please?
Yes.
Kelly, I've heard reference from you, as well as one other speaker, that we were 50th or 51st. Can you please tell me the source of that?
Actually, a senator, I believe it's Ertz, Ertz, starts with an E. Erdman had found these standards, which we use to tell us how good our schools are. Our schools are 51st.
So you don't really know the exact source?
No, I have the paperwork. I can definitely send you it.
I would like to have a source.
Absolutely, 100%. I will send it to you immediately. These are...
Am I able to comment?
The sources that I have, I will say, the sources that I have, the reason I'm asking
is because they do not show that we are 50th or 51st.
Again, I don't think a senator would be making this up. He found these standards. It is there. I will get you the information. We are 51st. We are the lowest in the nation for education. Yet, you're worried about sex ed standards? Are you kidding me? This is absurd, and it should not be happening. Again, not once, not twice, three times. You spent our money.
Can I?
Jaclyn, did you have a question?
Yes, so, well, I just, if I...
Is it for Kelly?
Well, I was, it is a question, and I want to just make sure I'm right.
Kelly, you'll need to come back.
All right. Read on. Are you referring to an article by Senator Erdman where he referred to an Alec Report Card? Does that sound familiar to you?
No.
That it's not...
I don't believe so, but I will pull up my information.
Okay.
Before the end of this meeting, I will get this to you.
So there, what, and I just, again, want to clarify, there was an article that we received from Senator Erdman that referred to a report at www.alecreportcard.org in the state of Nebraska, where Nebraska got a D with a GPA of 1.0. Nebraska ranked 51st out of 50 states. And so that is the source that we received and that I read from Senator Erdman, and I just wanted to see if that was the report you were referring to.
I believe that may be it, yes.
Okay.
And again, in six years, we've had no growth in our schools, not one half a percent in six years.
Thank you.
Is there any other question from a board member? Okay, moving on. Moving on, Teresa Carey? Welcome, Teresa.
Thank you. I'm Teresa Carey, and I'm from Wilcox. I, as a grandmother, taxpayer, and a concerned citizen that cares about the children in my community, am vehemently opposed to the indoctrination of our children with critical race theory or equity training and the perversion of comprehensive sexuality education. According to Nebraska Statute 79, 725, teachers are to give special emphasis to common honesty, morality, courtesy, obedience to law, respect for the national flag, the United States Constitution, and the Nebraska Constitution of Nebraska, respect for parents and the home, the dignity and necessity of honest labor, and other lessons of a steadying influence which intend to promote and develop an upright and desirable citizenry. No to CRT. CRT is divisive, racist, demeaning to oneself, image, and judgmental of others. It has no place in our schools, and the SEL curriculum should also be banned. Trying to sneak in CRT is deceitful and underhanded. And no to CSE. CSE has no business being in the classroom. It is one step toward grooming our children for pedophiles and pedophilia and sex trafficking with the perversion it teaches. A lot of people would have a hard time talking about this stuff, let alone trying to teach it to minors. It is illegal, and it is pornography. We would lose some good teachers that truly care about teaching our children to grow up to be productive, contributing members of society. So don't try to take over the job of the parent and confuse our children with alternative lifestyles. Let the kids be kids. They shouldn't have to be burdened with these heavy issues. Teach them to think critically, to appreciate differences, to respect others, and work hard for what they earn. Teach them history as it happened, its tragedies and its triumphs, so they can appreciate just how fortunate we are to live, to be living in this time and in such a great country. God bless the USA.
Time. Deb Miller? Deb Miller? Deb Miller? Good morning, Deb.
Good morning. Hi, my name's Deb Miller, and I'm a God-fearing, Jesus-loving, Bible-thumping grandma, and I have been called to speak up for those that cannot. I don't see any little kids here today, and so I want to tell you what it says in Matthew. In Matthew, it says, "Therefore, whoever welcomes a little child like this in my name welcomes me. But if anyone causes one of these little ones to sin and stumble, it would be better for him to have a large millstone hung around his neck and be drowned in the depths of the sea." Little children are loved by God, and if you're a grandparent or a parent, you love your kids too, and you want the very best for them. So I am very troubled because of some emails that I just read that says, and I think you know who said this, that they are frustrated that board members were giving too much weight to public comments and not the experts. I am a public commenter, and I am an expert grandma, and I am an expert parent, because I love my children. All right, I want to just say one word to you. Masturbation. Does that make anybody feel uncomfortable? Carrots, cucumbers, bananas, sex toys. I always thought they were food. But this is what CSE is trying to teach, our little special kids. I don't want my 10-year-old grandson to learn about putting on condoms, and I hope you don't either.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda McGill. Welcome, Brenda.
My name is Brenda, and I'm from Lincoln, and I'm not here to speak to the school board. You don't want to listen to me, you don't want to listen to any of us, you haven't listened to us. I call you to resign and to repent and to make amends. If we don't stand now against all of this, it's going to lead to the lowering of the age of consent, it's going to lead to the normalization of pedophilia in our culture, and we cannot allow this to happen. I am here instead to speak to the new school board members and to the good community members of Lincoln. Our elected officials are meant to represent us. They are not our leaders. We are the leaders. We are the leaders. I propose two methods of attack, because this is a war on our children. One is to remove our children from LPS, remove them in droves if at all possible, because it will lower their federal funding, and that will get their attention. Number two is to flood into the schools. Too many good adults are leaving the schools. We need to flood into the schools. Flood into the schools with our time, with our talents, with our concerns, with our expectations, expecting that their policies and their curriculum properly reflect our family and community values. I propose moms on a mission in elementary schools volunteering. I propose dads on duty, rotating in shifts in high schools. I propose adopt a teacher in the middle schools and showing them that you appreciate their work and you advocate on their behalf to their administration. When we do this with force like never before, it will send a firm message that we are the boss, and those are our children. Thank you.
Time. Thank you, Brenda. Amber Parker. Good morning, Amber.
Good morning. President Nichols, wow, you play a political card wonderfully. You are a Marxist. You are intimidating the parents. You need to be fired, you need to be fired, you need to be fired, you need to be fired. This is not a political speech. Do you realize what you are a part of? You are a part of pedophile grooming. You are a part of closing the open meetings acts, which clearly show that you are for this pedophilia grooming. Furthermore, Deborah Neary, correct me if I'm wrong, did you guys meet with the United States Department of Education before parents were deemed as terrorists? Because it's quite interesting, when you put on your Facebook post with my picture, calling me an extremist, well, if I am an extremist to protect children from pedophiles, then sign me up. Merrick Garland, you are the Attorney General of the United States of America. You have to abide by the governing law of the land. Every single one of you are too. But you throw your titles in front of us as education, but I have to tell you, you are Marxist. What makes you different than the Marxist Nazis that Hitler trained up and used to train the youth in Austria? This is serious. These are not personal attacks, but you have shown you cannot be trusted. I want to speak to the state of Nebraska. People like Deborah Neary want to make your schools abortion clinics. In 2019, State Senator, Senator Howard, introduced a legislative bill 423. In the provision, she wanted to remove legislation that protected our schools from having abortion clinics in them. Read it on page two. Deborah Neary, I call for an investigation on you. Governor Ricketts said it should be the local law enforcement. If any threats against you guys were made on the school board, well, I call upon an investigation of local law enforcement investigating you, perhaps the FBI and the National School Boards Association. There is another level of seriousness here.
Time. Thank you. The next group? Liz David, Julie Sheldon, Mark Balkowitz, Deb Fishbeck, Tanchin Blythe. Liz Davids.
Good morning, Liz Davids. A lot has been said this morning, a lot that I was going to say here, so I would just like to start with Deb Neary. You have lied to everyone. You've lied to the public, as a good politician would. That's what we hate about politics and politicians. You tell us what we want to our face, and then you go behind closed doors and do what you want, what your lobbyists want, what your funding supply wants. We're not here so Planned Parenthood can educate our children. We're here so our children get a good education. There is a Zambian family that has come into our community here in Lincoln recently. I've become friends with them. They lived in a Zambian refugee camp for 15 years and got a better education at the Zambian refugee camp. They are getting a lower education at Lincoln Public Schools. Their math class was three years ahead of LPS math classes in the Zambian refugee camp. Starting back with these health standards, 90% of the input from, that was researched by UNL, 90% is against these health standards, and you dug your heels in for some reason. Why would you do that to us? Why would you do that to our children? You say you want public comment, and 90% should tell you exactly what we want. We don't want our children taught inappropriate things. We don't want our children taught things that are more confusing to them, that will make them struggle more in life. This culture is confusing them and helping them struggle more than, more than ever before. If they don't even know who they are, because they can't trust their biology and their genetics, what are they supposed to trust? Who are they? If you want to teach them all the things you want to teach them, you better teach them that anal sex is not healthy for them, because those tissues are not meant to be penetrated. You better teach them that all sorts of children that are transitioning are also detransitioning when they become adults, because it's not healthy, it's not good for them. None of this is appropriate. None of this is academic. None of this is going to make good teachers want to be in our schools and teaching these children what's appropriate. Deb Neary, you should resign with dignity before we vote you out in disgrace.
Thank you, Liz. Julie Sheldon? Good morning, Julie.
My name is Julie Sheldon. I'm here from, I'm from here in Lincoln. I'm here to remind you that you have been elected by the parents, grandparents, and citizens of the state of Nebraska. Your job is to represent us. We, the parents, grandparents of Nebraska, have noticed that you have lied to us, intentionally hidden involvement of outside groups in the development of the proposed health standards, among other things. You have made negative, untrue, and hateful statements about the parents and community members that have spoken out at school board meetings. You have tried to silence parents by proposing a one-hour time limit for all public comment at this meeting here today. You have not chosen to stand up for parents and their rights to weigh in on what their kids are being taught. I am asking that you join the many other states that have come out against the use of the United States Department of Justice to investigate parents who speak out against controversial issues at school boards and in public spaces. It is time for you to choose a side. Are you with the parents of the students in wanting to ensure Nebraska's children get a proper education? Or are you working for yourselves or interest groups in order to promote your own ideologies and agendas? We, the parents, grandparents of Nebraska, vow to hold you accountable for your actions by continuing to attend and speak out at school board meetings, seeking candidates to run against you in upcoming school board elections, making our voices heard on election day by voting you out of office, taking our children out of public schools if that becomes necessary. We, the parents, grandparents of Nebraska, will not let you indoctrinate our children, sexualize our children, teach them hateful ideologies such as CRT. We, the parents, grandparents of Nebraska, are asking you to join us in protecting our children from the harmful ideologies that are trying to divide all of us. And I do have an example of a book right here that I want all of you to read. This is in the public school system, not my idea, a book about whiteness. This is what's being available, made available to our children. It talks about white supremacy and how white people benefit with money and power and all these other things. Let me tell you right now.
Time.
I have no money or power from being white, and you are not going to indoctrinate my grandson.
Mark Balkowitz? Mark? Mark Balkowitz? Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, board members. Actions printed in the October 10th Omaha World Herald and the October 13th Washington Free Beacon detailed actions and statements of Deborah Neary, Nebraska State Board of Education member, and several Nebraska Department of Education employees. This evidence quoted in the newspaper articles was acquired via public records request by two different sources. These sources detail the deceit, deception, manipulation, abuse of power, and abuse of authority that were used by the School Board of Education and the Department of Education while developing these standards. The standards were filled with comprehensive sex ed and critical race theory components that are a direct assault on the traditional values of the majority of Nebraska parents and tax. Many of you denied this content multiple times at school board meetings in April and May. The list of citizens in opposition to your health standards is wide and deep. Governor Pete Ricketts, 30 Nebraska State... We, the parents, grandparents of Nebraska, are asking you to join us in protecting our children from the harmful ideologies that are trying to divide all of us. And I do have an example of a book right here that I want all of you to read, this is in the public school system, Not My Idea, a book about whiteness. This is what's being available, made available to our children. It talks about white supremacy, and how white people benefit with money and power and all these other things. Let me tell you right now, I have no money or power from being white. And you are not gonna indoctrinate my grandson.
Mark Balkowitz. Mark. Mark Balkowitz. Good morning Mark.
Good morning board members. Actions printed in the October tenth Omaha World Herald and the October thirteenth Washington Free Beacon, detailed actions and statements of Deborah Neary, Nebraska State Board of Education member, and several Nebraska Department of Education employees. This evidence quoted in the newspaper articles was acquired via public records request by two different sources. These sources detail the deceit, deception, manipulation, abuse of power, and abuse of authority that were used by the School Board of Education and the Department of Education while developing these standards. The standards were filled with comprehensive sex ed and critical race theory components that are a direct assault on the traditional values of the majority of Nebraska parents and tax- Many of you denied this content multiple times at school board meetings in April and May. The list of citizens in opposition to your health standards is wide and deep. Governor Pete Ricketts, thirty Nebraska state senators, the Nebraska Catholic Conference, which represents approximately a quarter million citizens, the Nebraska Family Alliance, which represents another two-hundred thousand citizens, the Protect Nebraska Children Coalition of Kearney, which started in April and has over twenty thousand Facebook followers, and Nebraskans for Founders Values, which has thousands of citizens who receive our Minute Man alerts. Hundreds of NFFV and PNCC members have asked Attorney General Doug Peterson to start an investigation of the hundreds of emails and attachments that were required by the two public records requests. Where there's smoke, there's fire. If there were actions or statements that violate the Nebraska statutes, the AG office will find them. If violations took place, then punishment will be enacted that is defined by law. We have three recommendations. Number one, U6, a school board member should acquire the resignation of Deborah Neary. School board members should then vote to permanently stop development of health standards and allow local control.
Time, thank you Mark.
Thank you.
Deb Fishbeck. Good morning Deb.
Good morning. It's Fishbeck, and the gal, I, I wanna thank the gal at the front desk, because she's the first person who's pronounced it right. At the first try. Before I get started, Deborah, I'm disappointed, just because my name's also Deborah, and it's spelt the same, and it's because of Deborah in the Bible. You stood up for what was right. And there's nothing biblically right about what you're supporting right now. And I just pray that you rethink that, in the most kindest way I can say that. Please consider it. Let me see if I can get to my actual comments here, and my glasses. Today, I'm here to speak up for the parents that love their children, and the innocent minds of the children that deserve to be children without the perversion of the proposed new state school standards for health. Also, you're proposing the hate of children by the color of their skin through the CRT curriculum. Character matters, and being taught how to be honest and have integrity through action and words is truly what matters. The state school board is responsible for the outstanding development of children in math, science, reading, and writing, and we do not trust you in doing that, as per the numbers that have been spoken several times already this morning. The mismanagement of the teaching of patriotism in the schools with the flags of the communist and social country flags being proudly displayed in schoolrooms, and the conversations about the colonist behavior of America. What happened to be a, what happened to teaching what it is important to be an American? Where has that gotten lost? Your moral, ethical behavior has consequences, and what you teach has consequences. Parents and children deserve the truth, and to be taught the truth. And I'm afraid you, as a state school board, can't handle the truth, because you are not speaking the truth, presenting the truth, or displaying the truth regarding CRT. The proposed health standards are how you've been concluding with those that want to pervert the minds of children.
Fanchon Blyth. Good morning.
Good morning. Fanchon Blyth of Lincoln, I'm gonna finish Mark's two and three. The school board education members vote to permanently stop development of health standards, allow local control to continue, which has worked extremely well for several decades. Matt Blumquist must resign because of the lack of honesty and transparency of the NDE employees. First, I would like to thank the individuals who requested the four-year request on this board. Truth has been exposed on you all. What was uncovered are countless emails and texts that confirm you lied to we the people about your involvement with outside radical groups in the creation of the sex standards. Ninety percent of Nebraskans disagree with you and the standards. Due to the collusion, Deborah Neary, I am calling for your resignation effective immediately. This board needs to stop wasting time on standards no one wants, and get back to what parents want and grandparents want. Raising our children's proficiency in math and English above fifty percent. We, the people, spoke this week at the ballot box, I hope you all had it on. People from all parties came out against CRT in this country. Are you paying attention? We want people like you out. We do not agree with you, you are misrepresenting us. We, the people, are now awakened, not woke, like this board. I am so looking forward to 2022, and voting in candidates like Sherri Jones. I will be supporting her, even though she's not in my district.
Agenda item two point two. Submitted written public comments are attached in the electronic meeting agenda for the board and the public to review. Agenda item three. Thank you to those who attended in person today and who tuned in to the broadcast. As needed, a work session will be held on Thursday, December second, in Lincoln, Nebraska. A business meeting will be held on Friday, December third, at nine o'clock AM in Lincoln, Nebraska. The November fifth, two thousand twenty-one state board meeting is adjourned. Thank you.